Okay. Hello, everyone, tonight. My name is Mindy Brooks. We do not have a clerk this evening. We have one staff member out on maternity leave and another staff member is now on bereavement leave. So Tammy has graciously started everything for us and I will be doing my best to clerk as well as well as sharing information as staff. So I will read through the script here. So, welcome to the Lewis County Planning Commission Public Meeting. This meeting is taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom and is being recorded. If you're joining us from Zoom, please make sure that your mute button is on when you're not speaking. And we do not take comments through the chat feature on Zoom. Tonight's meeting is a workshop on Senate Bill 5290. The agenda is on the screen. We'll start with roll call. The following commissioners are present in the room. Commissioners Alves, Moore, Russell, Spogen, and Scootley. And we have Commissioners Corbin and Fritsch available on Zoom. So with seven members, we have a full quorum to begin the meeting. And I will turn it over to Commissioner Alves, who will be chairing from the room tonight.
All right. My name is Jason Alves. I would like to call the order of the October 8th, 2024 meeting of the Lewis County Planning Commission. Prior to tonight, the Commission received the agenda for today and the agenda is displayed on the screen. I would entertain a motion and a second from the Commission to approve the agenda.
Make that motion.
Second.
During discussion, not all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Thumbs up on the screens.
Aye.
And prior to...
Aye.
Okay. There it is. Last one. All right. Prior to tonight, the Commission received the meeting notes from the September 24th meeting. Are there any corrections to the meeting notes? If not, I would entertain a motion and a second from the Commission to adopt the minutes.
Motion to adopt the minutes is written.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That's everybody. The next item is public comment. Has anyone signed up for comment? There's nobody in the room.
No one in the room. I see no hands raised online, so I believe we have no public comment.
All right. So tonight's agenda item is a workshop on SB 5290. Purpose of a work session is for the staff to present information about the topic and the Commission to ask questions. No public comments on the proposal will be taken during the workshop. Public comments should be provided as testimony when the record is open, which is expected to... Or I don't know what that says, but it's open until October 23rd. I will now turn it over to staff.
Thank you. And I'm going, I have to do multiple screens here, so if you'll just bear with me as I get the presentation started. The other fun little item tonight is the screen up front may go to sleep and we'll put that off to get up and we wake it up. So if this screen starts to go to sleep or anyone out in Zoom world has issues, please let me know and we'll go wake up the screen where Tammy was sitting. It's up to you. If you'd like to do that, you can tap the screen every once in a while to keep it going. Okay. So again, you'll have to bear with me because I'm going to have to share. I'm going to have to kind of run two screens at the same time to do this, but that is okay. So there we go. So again, for everybody, Mindy Brooks, this is a workshop on Lewis County Code Amendments related to Senate Bill 5290, which has to do with permitting timelines. And this is a workshop tonight. The hearing, we actually already have it scheduled because we are on our own timeline for getting this, these code amendments through. So what I'm going to do tonight is give you an overview of all of it, encourage you to ask questions. So you feel like you have a good understanding of what we're doing and before we actually hand you the code in a couple of weeks to read through. So again, bear with me as I do multiple screens here. So tonight I will start by summarizing the Senate Bill 5290 requirements. Then we will talk about what our current process is for permit processing. We will talk about the proposed changes and implementation of those and then your specific next steps. Okay, so honestly, Senate Bill 5290 didn't change much, right? The RCW there is on the screen. It's the 3670B Local Project Permit Review that has always existed. It actually didn't make many changes to that. And we pretty much already meet the requirements of Senate Bill 5290 with some very specific changes that I'm going to talk about. There are already deadlines associated with the permits. The biggest change, and I'll repeat it multiple times tonight, is that the current deadlines that we have, there's nothing behind those. There's no penalty for not meeting those deadlines, which is really the point of Senate Bill 5290, is to create a penalty when you don't meet the deadlines, which I'll talk about a number of times. Let's start with what this applies to. So these are project permits. So in our vernacular, this is master site reviews, boundary line adjustments, simple seg subdivisions, SEPA, et cetera. Planning project permits. It does not apply to... Well, it applies to really complicated things, but you're allowed to set longer timelines. So our master plan areas, master planned industrial areas, master planned resorts, we can give longer timelines to. Anything that kicks into an environmental impact statement, we can give longer timelines to. And those, the local jurisdiction can choose your timelines. Deadlines do not apply to building permits. So those are all excluded. If a road approach, road review, well, septic, if any of those type of permits are consolidated with a project permit, right? So a lot of times they are. If you're doing a subdivision, you're also going to have a road approach and a road review and septic and all that stuff. If it's all consolidated, it is subject to the timelines. If it's a standalone, it's not. So if somebody just comes in to get a road approach, there's no deadline for a road approach permit. But if it's part of a planning project, then yes, it is subject to those deadlines. And then comp plan amendments are not part of this. So that's rezones. So when we do get those rezones requests, which we've put a moratorium on those while we're doing periodic update, but once we're through that, those can come back. Those are not subject to this because it takes a comp plan map amendment, which we can only process one time per year. So those do not comply to this either. Okay, so we'll talk about the current process.
Commissioner Scootley has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please go ahead.
That's okay. You know me, I always have questions. Why are we even involved in this? Is this a state bill?
Right. We have to implement it.
We don't get to vote on it.
Oh, yes. You have to approve the changes that I'm proposing. You have to make this recommendation. These are changes to Lewis County Code 17, which is your jurisdiction.
And then it goes up to the state for their...
No, then it goes to Board of County Commissioners to approve. And as long as no one appeals it as not complying with the state law, then it will be in effect. If an outside entity appeals and says you're not complying with the state law, then we will go through appeal process. Yes, we are mandated right now to implement this rule through our code.
We're mandated to implement this, this code that hasn't been voted on yet?
We are mandated to implement the RCW that's been amended by the state. We are mandated to implement it through our local zoning code. So we must amend our zoning code in order to implement the RCW.
Okay, so we're amending the zoning code?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah. Okay, so current process. A application comes in, project permit application comes in. Staff have 28 days to determine if that application is complete. If it's complete, we issue a letter and we start review. If it is incomplete, we issue a letter saying what needs to happen for it to become complete. Once it is complete, that is when the clock starts ticking. Our current deadline for most planning permits is 120 days. But final, long and short plats have shorter timelines, not the preliminary. Let me make that clear. The final does have longer timelines. The big change, there's no penalty for missing these deadlines. Once review is complete, we issue an approval. An approval of conditions or a denial, we don't actually issue denials. That is something that will likely change given these timelines. Because we try to find a way to yes, but now we will run out of time as we do that. So we will likely have to issue more denials than we do now. Okay. So let's talk about the proposed changes. So the beginning process doesn't change. You still have 28 days to determine completeness. Then we get into the Senate Bill recommends that you split your timelines up and it tells you the timelines by permit type. So type 1 will move to 65 days, type 2 to 100 days, type 3 to 170 days, except that the hearings examiner is allowed to extend beyond 170 days. Short, long plat, final plat stays the same. Everything else with the process stays the same. So I'm going to change to a slide where you can see a little comparison here. So here is a comparison on the deadlines. So again, today, most of our deadlines are at 120 days. We're splitting that up based on permit type, which is the recommendation of the RCW and it sets those specific timelines. So type 1 permits, this is like your master site review. The vast majority of what we do are master site reviews. It would decrease to 165 days. Type 2, SEPA is a type 2, would decrease as well to 100 days. Type 3, which are subdivisions, those bigger things, would move to 170 days. Type 3 permits that are decided by a hearings examiner, we don't control their schedule. So it would actually be 170 days plus. So the 170 days would be based on the first hearing. The hearings examiner can continue a hearing beyond that and they by contract have 10 days to render decision post-hearing. So the deadline will be that we've gotten to hearing by 170 days, not that they've made a decision. We are also pulling those really complicated ones, like the master planned areas, the shoreline conditional use or shoreline variance and moving those to 210 days. Because that is what we believe we can hit as a deadline and we're allowed to extend those out further since they're so complicated. We feel like these are all deadlines that we mostly meet now. So we're not actually particularly concerned that we will be missing deadlines because we usually meet these anyway, but they now will have teeth, which I will explain next.
Excuse me. Director.
Yeah, yeah.
Question.
Yes.
On that slide that was just...
Oh, I'm sorry. You want me to go back to that slide?
Please.
Yeah.
Under, what's an ADU under? If I pulled a master site review for my ADU, is that a type 1 permit?
It's a master site review, so it's a type 1.
And that's 120 days from when everything is deemed complete?
Currently.
That's interesting. But a short plat is only 30 days.
Final short plat. Preliminary is 170 days or 120 days now would be 170 days because it's a longer permitting process. So our code actually doesn't state that clearly enough, but the final plat, which is the subdivision RCW, it's a whole different RCW, requires that you issue final plat in an expedited way, but preliminary actually can take considerably longer. So the preliminary plats would stick around at the 170 days.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, let's talk about the refund component of it. So the big change, actually, none of that is a considerably big change from how we do business today. And those are maximum deadlines and on a lot of things, we're actually quite far under deadline here in our county. But the big change is that we will now have to issue partial fee refunds if we don't hit the deadline. And that is expelled out in the RCW. So I've made it into a table that I think is more understandable than the RCW words. The example is if a permit is supposed to be decided in 100 days, if we're at 101 days, then we need to issue a 10% refund of the fees, right? If it's all the way out to 121 days, so it's 20% over, then we have to hit a 20% refund. So that's where it becomes an actual penalty for not hitting deadlines. Where none of that exists today. If we don't hit a deadline, we just don't hit a deadline. But going forward, if we miss our deadlines, then we have to issue partial fee refund.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So I'm looking at this and I think it makes sense, but I feel like the real world scenario is that before it gets to an expired timeline, are there levers to pull to reset the clock?
Yep, we'll get to that. So you can...
So isn't that the most likely scenario?
It depends. So we're playing out a bunch of scenarios now, but let me walk through how we think it'll go, how we think things will go. Okay, so in order to meet these deadlines, the first and most crucial thing for us internally, so this has nothing to do with the way the code is changing, but internally, is that we have to make sure that we are very clear to the applicant what is required to determine completeness. And we need to make sure that we don't actually take in or start, you know, the process until we're complete. And so right now, we're pretty calm about taking stuff in. Somebody can turn in like some portion of the documents. We'll even let you pay the fees and bring stuff in later and you can email us stuff later. We're not going to do that anymore. We need everything in front of us. Once you're able to give us everything and everything we need in electronic format, we'll let you pay the fees and we'll get going on it. So we're going to have to be really tight on what we, when we will start the clock. MSRs, we start without determining completeness at the counter because it takes a planner to determine, do you need a wetland report? Do you need, you know, what do you need? And so that's where that 28 days actually comes in. We do most of our completeness just right at the counter. We don't need the 28 days. But for MSRs, we do need the 28 days because it takes a planner to determine everything you need. So we'll still have the 28 days as we do right now to let you know what else you need to turn in. And then you have the same process that there is today, which is you have 90 days to turn it in. Once we get it, we have 14 days to review it. We can do that two more times if needed. So we can keep the process going just as we do today to get to completeness. And then we will start. We are getting new software starting November 1 and it has to be done because we have a grant by the end of June that will really help us with this. We'll be able to do online submissions. We'll have all of our checklists online, so it'll be much clearer, we hope, to the applicant what you need to give us, especially for those over the counter ones where we can just determine completeness and go without additional review. We can pause the clock. So pausing the clock is when you've given us, the applicant has given us everything we need. We have all the documents in front of us. And then we get into the documents and we realize something's incorrect or something isn't complete. We are allowed to pause the clock, reach back out to the applicant for additional information. And the clock waits until we get that information back. So that is a process that we use now anyway. It's just we have to formalize that process into the code so that it's clear that we have these moments of pause if the information is incorrect or we need additional information. The new software again is really going to help with this because the company that we're going with does this work across the state and it has stop clocks in it. So we're able to push pause on the overarching clock and run smaller clocks like the 14 days, 90 day stuff. And then restart the big clock across the top. So we're excited about our new software to help us track this. The problem that we've run into in just conceptualizing running these, some of the more complicated ones out, is the back and forth of, and this happens to us with certain permits, is the back and forth each time, each time, right? Because you get back to us, we have 14 days. Those 14 days are actually part of the clock. They're ticking. And then eventually, we're going to lose, we're going to run out of time. We're going to hit a point where there isn't more time, but we still don't have everything that we've asked from some people. And that happens now and it's frustrating for everybody. So we do have a clause that the applicant just can ask for a six months extension. Because if we don't have that and that clock is getting close, we're going to deny the application. And that's not something that we typically do, but rather than pay a fee, if we still don't have the information we need, if we're able to say, this is what you're supposed to give us per the criteria and we don't have it, then we will simply issue a denial. That we can't, we cannot approve it because we do not have the correct information. So rather than doing that, we're going to add and just involuntary six month extension that the applicant can ask for so that we can continue to work and not end up in a denial. Denials are appealable, so if anyone feels that we have done something wrong, then those can be appealed.
What are the effects of a denial?
Means you don't get your permit.
Do I have to come back and pay everything again? Or do I come back when I got it and drop it on the desk with that new thing? Or do I start everything over?
You can appeal if you think we're wrong or you're going to have to start over.
Have you paid any permits? Will we have paid any permits?
Absolutely.
And those will be... Interesting. I had another question, Mindy, too, so that I understood it clearly. Now, if you do something as simple as an ADU and you need an engineer's report to reduce the well circle, he goes off and does his thing and then he usually takes it in and drops it off because when we get the MSR, the ping pong ball's going all kinds of different ways. I think I just heard you said we won't do that anymore, that we'll have to wait and I'll have to...
Not for MSRs. So most stuff that, MSRs are different because we don't determine completeness at the counter. We don't actually take the whole permit in at the counter. We take in the initial application and the fee and then the planner's got to figure out what do we need? And then all those things have to happen. So with MSRs, that's actually still part of determination of completeness. Because the planner will have 28 days to work with all of our, you know, our septic folks, our road folks, whomever, and get a complete list of, here's everything you need to give back to us. And that'll be part of it, a letter of incompleteness, just like it is today. And then you guys will have 90 days to give us that. You can ask for two more extensions if you want to, if it's taking time. You know, because we only have a certain number of people who do like wetland delineation, so it can take more than 90 days to hire someone and get the work. That information can continue to come back into the planner individually by each of those consultants that's doing the work. And the planner just won't determine completeness until the planner has everything they need, right? So MSR is a little bit different in that way because we don't do an over the counter determination of completeness. Once it's complete and the clock starts, then we are actually running through review. Once the clock starts on MSRs, it typically doesn't take that long, right? The hard part is getting all those engineer studies and all that work done upfront. And that actually is part of completeness review. So our clock really isn't running at that point.
Why ask that question earlier?
Yeah.
Can't hear Bob.
Oh, you turned, Bob turned himself off, not on.
Excuse me. I was saying, Frank, that my experience is, and why I asked that 120 days is because that's not my experience that it takes that long. It takes that long to get all the stuff together.
Correct.
But not once it's together, usually.
Right. For MSRs, the problem that we run into with where the deadline will be difficult is it happens with some wetland reports that we'll get the wetland report in. So technically, we're complete. We have the wetland report. And then we start looking through the wetland report and we realized they didn't include the right criteria in it. So that's a pause of the clock where we have incorrect information. So we'll pause the big clock and send a letter back to the applicant saying, you've not met the federal guidelines for wetland criteria. You need to do that. So we have to actually formalize that process because it's not formalized in the code, but we will formalize it. So that is an example in MSRs where we might get close to the final deadline where we have one today where I think we've gone four times plus a site visit on a site for a wetland delineation and the person who's doing the reporting has not given us what we need. It's still incorrect. The state's determined it's incorrect. So we'll keep working with them because we don't have an ultimate deadline. But with an ultimate deadline, we will, we may get to that point where we have to issue denial because we don't have correct information in front of us.
Or since they're working with the Alvin Lasaske for an extension.
They can ask for a six month extension, so we don't have to do that.
Do it all the time.
Yeah. Because we don't want to do that. Nobody wants to do that. We want to get to yes, but we also can't afford to refund money, so.
Hey, Mindy, the way it is currently, I believe, is if you have asked for something and a person has submitted it, it goes back around, I don't know, we, we call it internally, you know, it goes back around the whole circle of people that have to make comment. And, you know, it appears to be kind of a time consumer. Are you going to change that at all? Like if you're just working on one subject, have you thought about modifying that it doesn't go back to the public works and the health department and everything?
For review 2, review 3 of subdivision? Yeah. We're going to be looking at the subdivision process as a whole and seeing if there are ways to make it more efficient. So I'll talk about here in a second. If you're interested in that, I'd follow along with the process team meetings that we have twice a month because that's where we'll get into the nitty gritty of how to make things more efficient. Because that's very internal, so it won't come in front of you guys as code amendments. But we do need to make things more efficient. Yeah.
Mindy, you mentioned planner, but you know, we could honor now for permit, we turn it in to front counter. That's typically not a planner.
That's a permit tech.
Yeah. Is that, are you just generally saying that's the same person or?
No, it's not the same person. Permit techs do intake.
Yeah.
Make sure that you've turned in all the things that are necessary. They get it into the system and they assign the people that have to review it, which usually includes a planner who's a different person and they're doing a plan level review. It oftentimes includes multiple other departments, environmental health, public works.
So when you turn it in, there's a timeframe before it goes to a planner. And if you're turning in a building permit, why would that even go to a planner?
Building permits are not subject to this. So we're not talking about building permits. We're only talking about project permits, which are master site reviews, BLAs, subdivisions, SEPA, et cetera.
I didn't catch that in the literature.
Yeah. It's, yeah, and I was on one of the earlier slides. So building permits are not subject to this.
Frank's got his hand raised.
Okay.
Thank you. So if a person gets to the point where a six month request would be to their best advantage, well, to everyone's best advantage, I'm assuming that you will always offer that as an option so that the person can decide to exercise that right?
Yeah, so we'll be updating our standardized letters that we send out to people that are clear what you can do. And it'll be just an allowance in the code that you'll see, so anyone can exercise that right. But a lot of our standard language in our, the letters and reports that we send out will need to change and will include things about this. And we may have to create a standardized denial letter, which we don't have because I've looked back 10 years and we've never denied anything. So nobody wants to, trust me.
Yeah, yeah. No, I always appreciate the proactive approach, you know, when, you know, somebody may not be, you know, completely versed on all the laws and everything. And so, you know, for us to put ourselves out there just a little bit to give them good advice that would help them with their MSR, that that's... I think to everybody's advantage. And then those that of course are experts at it, you know, they're, they're going to know when to ask, but I would, I could see there being cases where somebody wouldn't know because they don't know all, all the laws.
Yeah. Yeah. And just, I mean, just so you guys know, right now we're at a week and a half on approving MSRs. In the height of the summer, our highest, we're at four, four weeks. We are well below the 65 days and, and those are actually the 120 days allowance right now. So we don't anticipate a lot of problems with this, but we do have to put in safeguards for those individual ones that just are a problem and, and we get those there occasionally. So just to summarize our changes here, and I'll talk about some implementation. Excuse me. There we go. So timeframes for decisions are changing. They apply to project permits. Again, that's master site reviews, boundary line adjustments, subdivisions, CEPAs, all those planning level type of work. Do not apply to building permits, do not apply to comp plan amendments. And then there's that clarification that I gave you that things like road approach or well sighting or any of those are captured if they're part of a planning permit. They're not captured if they're standalone. So it depends on what you're doing with those. Type one and type two permit timeframes are decreasing, type three are increasing. If we exceed our timelines, we need a partial, do a partial fee refund. We will be changing internal processes significantly to make sure that everything runs efficiently and we can hit those timelines. Okay, let's talk about implementation. So per the state. These new timeframes go into effect on January 1. So anybody who hasn't adopted code changes. The RCW is automatically in effect for all those jurisdictions. So we need to get this going. Our timelines match the RCW, so that's not really a problem. It's all the other stuff, the processing stuff we need in the code that we need to get in there. We, as I said, we've received a grant to update our software. So we are going to be leaving Adept and moving to a new software platform. We're moving to SmartGov, which is run by Granicus. It's used by many cities and counties across the state. We're doing the big version of SmartGov, which means it's going to have an online portal for submissions. You'll be able to track your own permits through the software instead of having to call us. It has a lot of nice bells and whistles for this timeline stuff. And then the other feature, which I absolutely love, is it has a an app that we're going to be getting tablets for our building inspectors. So they're going to be able to issue right on site, the inspection results, which I'm really excited about for them instead of having to come back and enter it in and it takes a couple of days. So that's really exciting. Per the grant, our software has to go live July 1. So we will be moving fast through that, through the software implementation. That's really fast. But like I said, they work with a lot of jurisdictions in Washington, so they have a lot of standardized stuff that'll just be perfect for us. We will be figuring out the internal pieces of this at our process team. That's the first and third Tuesdays. They're on teams. So we'll be going through workflows, identifying efficiencies, talking about the software build. We'll likely do beta testing through there. So if you guys want to stay like super involved in the internal workings of it, those are open to the public. Anybody can attend those. We can get you the, the link to the teams and you're welcome to, to jump in on those. It's the sausage making. You guys will get to see us make sausage with that stuff. But the other benefit of it for us is having people there who will be the users of it and can say, oh wait, hold on a minute, that makes literally no sense to me. We can back up a little bit and, and take some other steps. So we would love to participate. Yeah, Frank.
So a lot of the rest of the county is, has deployed OpenGov. And is there any correlation or relation to this program that you guys are going to be getting to OpenGov?
No, we looked at OpenGov. So we've reviewed, oh my gosh, seven, eight different software platforms for doing permitting. And this one is by far and away the most user intuitive software that we saw, and it has the most already tailored to permitting as we do it. So so we wanted to go with this, SmartGov, not the OpenGov version of it. It does already talk to the same types of software that we already use that everybody else uses. So it talks to Munis, which is our budget software. It talks to Laserfish, which is our archiving software. So it talks to the Point and Pay, which is our software that we use for credit card processing. So we feel confident that it's going to be seamless on the on that sort of talking between software.
Well, that was what I was getting at. Thank you.
Yep. So let's talk about your guys' schedule here. So you're having your workshop right now. On November 12th, you guys are going to have a public hearing and this will be on the Lewis County Code 1705 amendments. So all of what I just described is being, is a code amendment to 1705. We will get you those code amendments in a couple of weeks. So we can go to public hearing on those. And then from there, we've already scheduled the December 11th B O C C workshop, December 17th, public hearing. So that we can get it all done and be effective on January 1. And then of course, July will be our new permitting software. So yes, there is a gap where we're going to be using the old software, which doesn't help us track timelines. I sort of envision really ugly spreadsheets on the side for a minute while we track timelines until we get the new software in place. So that's going to be a bummer, but it is what it is, right? When we get you guys the code to review, I would highly encourage you to take a look at it right away. And then reach out to me with questions. So I completely understand that this is super techie and really kind of behind the scenes type of stuff for a lot of people. This isn't like our normal code things, which are these high level approval criteria and stuff. So take a look and please feel free to email me questions. Or if you want to sit down and walk through it and be like, okay, let's like process out a permit together. So you can like conceptualize how it's going to work. We can absolutely do that, too. So I don't want you to feel like just because we have to expedite the hearing process that you don't have an opportunity to work with staff to better understand what you guys are approving. So please use this as a resource. Once we get you guys the draft amendments. We'll make ourselves available so you can understand what we're doing.
Do we want the, are we voting the night of the public hearing to get that moving forward quickly?
Yes, we will need a recommendation from you on the 12th.
Thank you.
Yeah. So this is definitely a really fast process. So again, if you, if you want to go over it with staff between now and that hearing, you know, please just let me know. We can, like I said, we can answer questions or if you guys want to kind of war room an example one-on-one, we can do that, too. So.
Mindy, when's the process team going to start meeting?
To do what?
The process team to start going through this SmartGov software. Is that what that is about?
Process team is a standing meeting. So we meet the first and third of every month anyway, and talk about process improvements. But it's going to shift now, starting this month, over to this focus, to focused on internal processes to make sure we hit our deadlines.
Okay.
And then once that's done, it'll shift back to our normal process review stuff. So for example, the road review code that I brought to you guys, I'm sorry, the road naming stuff that I brought to you guys, all that code stuff. That went through process team first. Right? So we wanted to make sure that we weren't creating any other issues with these code changes. And they helped us figure out some pieces that were missing before we even got to you guys. So any code changes that we're going to make, we tend to take through process team first. So it's a standing meeting that happens all the time. We're just, we will now be for the next few months, really focused on, on this work of making sure we hit our deadlines.
And people just need to reach out to you at your email to, to get the team's link or sign in or?
Yeah, you can shoot me or Katie an email and we'll get you the team's link so that you can attend those.
Okay.
I think it's online, too. I think if you go under, I'm not sure, maybe it's not. I can't remember if it's on, if it's our calendar or not. I'll have to go look.
Okay. I can look.
Mindy, would you answer a question just so I can think about this here for a couple of days? But I'm back to the deny. Okay, so I'm familiar with how those, you know, how things progress and things that come to mind like are when we are told that we have to do something and we don't agree with it, let's just say. And so then, you know, it does take some time because, you know, you may have to go to an attorney, you know, what's the rules and, you know, some expertise. So I could visualize that, that it would be easy to go back to you because I would be worried to not get that denied now. I've never thought about a deny, but now I will be worried. So I'm going to, how am I going to protect myself when I am required to do something that's taking more time than what you're giving me? Before, before the, the time where you're going to give me a deny.
Sure, absolutely. So the allowance for requesting a six month extension is a, just an allowance that everyone has. So you don't have to wait for us to offer you an extension. The, we are writing as a standalone allowance. So the applicant at any point can request an extension of up to six months to give yourself time. If we're at that point where it's going to take more time.
Okay, I see that and I could visualize that a person would immediately say, six months, hold. Now, now, does that mean you have six months to give me, the, does your timeline now turn to six months?
Our timeline just stops until you're ready to, within that six months, when you come back and say, okay, here's the information that we've been able to get, we want you to restart the clock.
Okay. And so there will be some number of days when we restart that clock that, that you will be able to communicate to us, okay, now we've got 12 more days to tell you or whatever.
Right. We'll have, it'll be at some point in that timeline where, you know, let's say we've run 50 days into the timeline.
Right.
And we've gotten to a point where you realize I'm going to need to go get legal counsel. There's no way that I'm going to be able to do that in the remaining three months. I need more time. So you would say that you'd write us a letter saying, I want to request a six month extension. We will pause it 50 days. It just sits there. Right? Underneath of that, there's a six month that's running, that's you getting us information. When we get to that and we're like, okay, great, we have the information, we turn the clock back on, we move to 51.
Okay, got it.
Right? So then we run the rest of the timeline out. So that's why we wanted to put that in there because we knew in complicated cases, we could run into denials. And we'd rather have the applicants have an option of pausing for a longer period of time. And we could, you know, work it out for a minute and then we'll pick the clock back up again. At the same time, if we get to a point where there's just disagreement, and those usually only happen when there's a hearings examiner coming anyway. It might be better to not do that and to turn over to the hearings examiner to make the ruling. So if there's a staff and applicant disagreement, we can ask, we can just give it to the hearings examiner and the staff can explain. I don't think that I, that we have what we need and the hearings examiner can rule against us and rule in favor of the applicant. So there may be some instances where it makes sense to go ahead and move forward for the hearings examiner, even if there isn't agreement between staff and applicant.
So then you're, I forget, did you give 30 or 60 days for a final on short plat?
It's 30 days. Let me go back up and I will just put it back up there. Hold on a sec. And remember, this is for final plats, not not preliminary. Okay, so
Okay, so 30 days.
Short is 30 and final, and final long is 90.
So, so final short plat is 30 days after prelim?
No, so usually we do the prelim and then we give you a period of time for you to finish everything up. And then you come back and say, okay, we're done with all of that. We now want a final. And then we have to expedite the finaling.
Okay.
And that's already in code, that's been in code for a while. That's the subdivision code.
Okay.
So we, we've never been able, able to drag our feet on the finaling, once you've given us everything you need to.
You give prelim, it has some conditions.
Yep.
Let's say three conditions. The applicant meets those conditions and then the 30 day clock starts.
Right.
And then you, then you tell somebody to add, add on the map what you've done.
Yep.
And then it goes back to you and then it goes.
It just gets finalized by us and then you take it over to record it. And once it's recorded, it's done.
Okay.
Yeah. And we meet, these, these timelines are already in place. We already meet these.
30 days.
Yeah. Yeah, we already meet the 30, 90 split. Well, that's, there's Well, well, for final long plat, you have, like final long plat's a big deal. You have five years to do everything that's in that condition because you got to build a road. Right? So once you've done all the things for long plat, you come in and you say, okay, we've met all of our conditions, we're ready to final. And then we move into the 90 day. And again, this is, these are already our timelines for final, short and long, and we already meet these. So we don't envision any change associated with that. The preliminary side may have changes, may have some efficiency changes we need to work out. Yep.
Minnie?
Yeah.
You're dealing with the handicap here. Could, could you explain? I mean, you, you sent us 19 pages here, which I picked up and dutifully read and, and noted and, and made marks and everything. And, and that's all about building. So you're talking about zoning and planning and, and master site plan reviews. I mean, how did I get lost in this conversation?
No, the, the RCW has a lot of language about all kinds of stuff because it's all about local project review. And so the RCW, so the underlying is what's changed.
When do we talk about these 19 pages?
Well, we're not going to talk about all 19 pages. We're only talking about the changes, which are the underlined and the new sections, which are related to project permitting, which don't include, include building permits. So we're not going to talk about all of local project review because they're not changing everything. Like I said at the beginning, most of that RCW didn't change and we don't have to do anything. All we have to do is make sure that our timelines are clear for the project permits and to institute partial refunds when we are not meeting those. So the change in the RCW is actually very small. But it is forcing us to do a lot of things internally to make sure that we got everything set up right.
I think I remember reading in here that somewhere we were going to be told on our document or on some kind of a response, what that timeline was. So on your new software thing, is that where it's going to tell me the clock stops, start, stop, start?
Yeah. So you'll, it'll be in two places likely. There'll be likely a standardized letter that goes out that populates with your information. So when we've determined something is incomplete, we would send that, right? Once it's determined complete, we'll be looking at it. And once it's determined complete, we, it'll say in that letter, the standardized letter, this is how many days that we have to complete review, right?
Yeah.
And then you can go in to, we'll be able to go into the software and see that in there. And then the other part that we need to figure out in the software is when we pause. We'll need to be able to indicate when you go in and look at your permit that this is paused at X day. And there's a, you know, clock running underneath of that for us going back and forth before the big clock starts. So we're hoping the software can really help with that because it can get confusing when we have these back and forths where we are in timeline. So it should be in two places.
And then go back to his comment about building the road, you know, and everything. You know, I hadn't really thought about that, but yeah, if you have to build a road, like a private road.
Nothing, nothing about that is changing. So right now, the preliminary plat will say, you need to build a road and you have five years to do that.
Okay, okay, even on a short plat?
Yes.
Okay.
So nothing is changing, nothing about that is changing. That all stays exactly the same it is. Yes, once it's done, right, once the, once the road is done, that, and you come back and you say, okay, we've met all the conditions of preliminary, we're ready to final, that's the really fast timelines. But you're done with all your bad, you had the difficult stuff by then.
So, excuse me, so when do we actually talk about the underlying items? There's page after page in here of underlying changes.
So, I'm not, I had not intended on going through all of that. If you'd like to sit down and go through it line by line with me, happy to. But we've summarized that into what the changes are that we're gonna have to do.
Oh, you've already been through this and summarized it.
That's the presentation you just got.
Ah, I get it, I get it. No, this is, this is fabulous reading, but I probably
It's not fabulous reading.
Yeah.
I cannot tell you how many times I've read it. Dozens of times. And I've gone back to sections of it multiple dozens of times. And I've been working with all the other county.
Some of the stuff that hasn't been already changed?
What's that?
Are we allowed to change some of the items in here that we disagree with?
No, that's state law. You have to talk with the, with your lobbyists about that.
Well, let me ask you, and this is totally out of totally out of necessity here. But it says that we're supposed to be doing it, for, if you get a grant, you have to do a two units. You can't even do a single family.
That has nothing to do with this code. And it doesn't apply to
It stays right in here.
No, I know, but that has nothing to do with what, the changes that we're making right here.
Okay.
This has nothing to do with units.
It's not, it's not underlined. I'm just wondering.
No.
You know, right now, City of Schehalis or you know, our county doesn't have to do two units.
A whole different RCW that has nothing to do with this right now, already, or already has been adopted inside of an urban growth area. If you have single-family zoning, you must allow up to two units. That is now state law. Additional to the
Inside where?
Inside urban growth areas. So
Urban growth areas.
Along with the single family, you have to allow up to 280 us. It has nothing to do with that particular code. It's a whole different code section. Yeah, so Jeff, if you would like to just sit down with me, like, go through, I'm happy to.
I'm not picking on you, I just notice things.
It's, it is so, there's so much in that entire RCW. So if you wanna go through all of it, I'm happy to sit down and go through it with you.
I mean, you got some deadlines here that July 1st of 2024 and it's, you know, some of these things are gone.
Uh, that's, yeah, that's a reporting one that already passed. We weren't subject to it. So I, I will say, happy to talk with you about all of them. Also happy if you would like to just trust that I've literally been working with WASC, our attorney, the, all the other counties across the state and the cities, we're all working on this together. So this is not without heavy level of scrutiny as to what we're putting in front of you that we think is very well defensible and conforms to the requirements under the state law.
I was just concerned that we'd have to vote on something we haven't talked about.
Yeah, you're gonna get the code amendments in two weeks and that will be what you're voting on. I'll never give you something to vote on that you haven't seen. That's not, that's not ever gonna happen. Any other questions about this lovely stuff?
I guess I have a question. I don't wanna take any longer, but my concern with this is that on its face, it seems very reasonable and maybe even to the advantage of the people who are applying for these things. My concern is that if things lag behind for any number of reasons, which any of us who have built have seen all those reasons come to pass. And so my concern is that there's gonna be a potential, especially, you know, would take something like short staffing, which is not really anybody's fault. My concern is that that would create either a huge uptick in people being sent to hearings examiner just to buy the extra time or a huge number of
Oh, no, we can't do that. So the type of permit you're in is the type of permit you're in. It's all spelled out as to what things, we can't move you to a hearings examiner process.
We're, well, I guess my concern is, and again, correct me if I'm wrong here, but that I mean, because I would say if the over, under for fees being paid out by the municipalities is one, I would probably take the under on that. And so there are levers here to pull that faced with the potential, the potential of having to refund money to somebody, it seems my concern is it would be easy to pull one of two levers that may not be 100% legitimate.
Yeah, the only levers that we have to pull is we can pause the timeline if we need additional information or corrections. We can offer the applicant an option to extend timeline. And then when, and then we can, we can deny if we feel we do not have the information, we can deny it.
Well, that last one is obviously the concern to me is that denials would go up.
And, and I think if you talk to, if you, yeah, if you talk to any planner in any jurisdiction in the state, they're gonna tell you that denials are going to go up. That is a consequence of this. And we said that when they were passing this law, that the way that they were writing it is going to result in denials that haven't happened in the past. What we wanted to do with the option for voluntary extension is to try to avoid that so that we can continue to work with the applicants as we do today, without running out of the timeline, to make sure that that is not the case, because it's, that's actually in no one's best interest.
I would agree with that.
But it, but, but that is an absolute consequence of this law being changed.
Yeah, which essentially, again, I mean, like we talk, I mean, I rail on this all the time. It just is going to end up being in some form or another attacks on, on people that are already paying a lot for housing. So that's my concern with this is the denial rate is certainly going to go up. I think we can all agree on that. And then, I mean, I've seen situations plenty of times where six months is not nearly long enough because of things that we've talked about and, and I, and I know people are working on efficiency things and that's awesome. I'm, I'm happy about that, but I've seen things because of just playing.
We can extend that longer. We don't have, I mean, this is, that clause is purely our own clause that we've put in there.
I'm not advocating for things taking six months longer, believe me. Would like them to be years shorter in some instances. So, yeah, I mean, that, those are, those are my concerns. It's gonna create potentially a bottleneck in denial, or an uptick in denials and then an uptick in people, especially when we get to these points of disagreement. I mean, I know you know, I had a guy tell me once that he, you know, you, you run into situations sometimes where opinions are used as a you know, it doesn't have to be backed by anything. If there's an adverse decision maybe to an applicant. And so when you run into those types of things where those, there's those types of disagreements where it's more opinion-based than code-based, it seems like it would be easy for that to be used. And then that would kind of automatically run everybody to the hearings examiner in those instances instead of having to take forever.
No, absolutely. So the code, as much as we'd like it to be clear code, you can't write 100% clear code. There will be discretion in some of it all the time. And because of that, there can be differences of opinion when you're working with different people as to how those need to be met.
Yeah.
Um, we try to, like, in the division that I used to work in, before I became director, we have a whole spreadsheet of how we interpret things that are discretionary. And then we've also issued memos of code interpretation uh, in order to standardize as much as we can about how we're gonna, we're going to make these opinionated decisions where the code is not as clear as we want. But there will always be circumstances where there's disagreement about the opinions around those codes, right? There are today. Uh, and there is nothing different about the fact that there's that disagreement today versus tomorrow. Because if somebody says, I can't approve it because I disagree with you on the interpretation of it, then they can, they can issue the denial today.
No, I, I absolutely agree with that. I guess, I guess my more maybe cynical take on it could be that it would be easy for somebody to go, if they're pressed up against a deadline to go, well, I just don't think this is, this is code and, and that's all they have. It's like a magic phrase that sends you to the hearings examiner. Now you've got unlimited window based on, on that. And if there's an influx of cases being sent to the hearings examiner, we all know how long it could take to go through that anyway.
So, so let me just be clear.
Fairly large, no?
Saying that you disagree with something doesn't send it to the hearings examiner.
No, I know, but you run into the, into the clock and that's the only avenue you have left.
It isn't the only avenue. So the, the only permits that go before a hearings examiner are the ones that already go before a hearings examiner. You can't take something that doesn't go before a hearings examiner and say, oh, we're gonna send it to the hearings examiner to make a decision. That isn't possible. The type of permit that you are is the type of permit you are and the decision maker is the decision maker and you can't uptick it. What you can do is issue a denial and the denial can be appealed to the hearings examiner. The example I was talking about with Lori is
So
right now, we, we wait to take things to the hearings examiner till there's complete agreement between the staff and the applicant. So that our recommendation to the hearings examiner is always to approve it. We never tell the hearings examiner, we think you should not approve something.
Sure, so I guess, I guess we're talking about the same thing and I'm just not using the same language, but yeah, so I guess
Or that would create a bottleneck there.
That would be, so I guess what I'm saying then is that because of the increase in denials, that a lot of those may end up going to hearings examiners to be challenged, that process could take God knows how long.
It absolutely could.
And so now we're
And we don't know how many, we don't know how many denials we'll get to.
And I'm not, uh, what I don't wanna get off into is that I'm, I'm disparaging this thing just for the sake of it, but what I wanted to get to with this line of questioning is are there any ways that we can foresee to be able to mitigate that situation? That's really where, where I wanna take it is, you know, what, what things can we do in our code that maybe not everybody else is doing to mitigate the potential, you know, and I'm obviously thinking of, of our side of the coin and, and people who are out there trying to build things, whoever they are.
Sure.
Um, having to deal with denials that are based on the clock running out, maybe not based on potentially the merits of the actual builds.
So my, so the way that we try to avoid denials is we make sure that our applications are very clear as to what needs to be turned in to us. And always reference the code so that you, the applicant, can go look at the specific code and see what those criteria are yourself. Make sure that is all very, very clear. It's not clear on our permit applications completely right now. So there are cases where people think they've given us everything. They go in, they haven't, creates a lot of problems, right? So we need to fix that on our end. The other thing that I would ask is we hear from people all the time, we're getting a different opinion on something or but what I need, I don't need that statement. What I need is an ax, a very explicit. We were applying for this, this was the code it was interpreted as saying, we disagree for these reasons. Because then we can go in and say, does that code need to change? Is there something about that code that needs to be more standardized and less discretionary? Right? So I would ask, with our process teamwork, if there are parts of our code where you, where you've run into, there's an opinion and we're not getting past it easily, let's identify those now and figure out if we can make changes to the code to make it clearer. Right? That would be our remedy.
Yeah, Mindy? This came down from the state, is that correct, or?
Yeah, this is a change to the state law.
Right, right. So what is the intent? To, to speed things up or to slow things down? Maybe that'll
The intent of this is to stop King County from taking 400 days to issue the equivalent of an MSR. That is the whole point. This code was written for King County. And we're all caught in it. It was written by, initially by the lobbyists of the building community. It was then taken up by WASC and WAC. So the Washington State Association of Counties and Association of Cities grabbed it, hired a consultant, which just happens to be our consultant too, which is fabulous. And they ran it through working with the lobbyists out of the building community. So the intention is to speed everything up, but for most of us smaller counties, we are already below those deadlines. You're not actually speeding it up. You're creating problems for us and we all of us wrote letters to that effect.
Right, now, I, I've been through your process. I, I spent 45 years going through the King County process. Trust me.
Yeah, this code is, this, this state law is written for them. It's not written for us. Yeah, so we warned them about all these issues that they were creating at a local scale in the smaller jurisdictions where we don't have timeline problems. But they, but the state legislature did not remedy that for us. So here we are. Yeah, I would have loved if they had said that this applies to jurisdictions over 100,000 people and just leave us out of it. That would have been much better. But here we are.
Jason makes a good point. The points are, are, I was wondering if since the out
Uh-oh, what happened? Oh, I'm listening, what's up? Oh. Okay.
I was gonna say, uh, if King County is mandating fees, it seems like we could, in good governance, put together systems, software systems, like you said you're getting, that I think of the lawyers and the clock that a lawyer has, where they keep very good track of, of things and they don't get lost. If we have those, then it seems we could be proactive as a community and when we run into problems, we can say, make sure the clock says, hey, you and I need to make a decision. Either I need to deny you or you need to get an extension.
Right, that's what we'll do.
And we just keep doing that. And so if I were a county commissioner, I would say, figure out a way to keep doing it and do the extensions, because I never wanna do the
Yeah.
10, 20%.
And that's exactly what we would like to do. And that is the only remedy that is offered in the RCW besides trying to shore up our code anywhere where there's stuff that's discretionary and we're able to get rid of the discretion, right? So it, right now, you'll see that it's written for voluntary six-month extension. And that's beyond the addition correction issue, right? So that's like, we have three 90-day extensions that are just based on, we say that you haven't given us the right information. We can do that process. But then on a top of that, we can, you can ask for another 180 days on top of it. So we have the, we have a very long ability to try and work through anything that we can. And that is certainly staff's preference, which is why we put that extra clause in, because that is not a requirement of the RCW. It's something that we would like to be able to do and not get to denial if we can avoid it.
So just because the state has passed something that says there is a fine if we get to denial.
Not denial, if we don't hit the timeline.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can do, we can get past that. We can just put extensions on.
We're trying to.
Yeah.
We are trying to, because we don't wanna issue fee refunds and we don't wanna deny. But things take a while. Yeah, things take a while. Yeah, so when the code gets to you, definitely read through it. If you would like to propose something different in terms of the extensions, please do. We, you know, we've put together what we think is a reasonable approach. We think that with the approach we've put forward, we will be able to still be in the world of, you know, approving and hitting deadlines on 98% of the work out there. So I'm not overly concerned, but
Mindy?
We're happy to hear more about your thoughts.
On the bigger picture again, at the state level, i- is this some sort of attempt to unify the processes throughout the state? I mean, why can't our county be different than King County?
It's not supposed to unify the processes. So there's been attempts to look at like using standardized software or standardized processes across the state and those have died every single time because each jurisdiction's too unique. This is however, a step by the state, again, from the building and development community to enforce strict timelines. Stretching your hands up?
Yeah, I was just, I just had a question if you're done with your answer. Um, I was wondering if you, if you are gonna come up against deadline or denial or fee fines, whatever. Or do you ever ask a third party to, to help process this stuff, to get it through? Like, if you have things that start to pile up, is that something that the county is able to do is get outside help to help keep things trucking along?
Yeah, absolutely. So a lot of jurisdictions, the really small jurisdictions do that anyway because they don't have staff. So they use permit review staff through a consultant. The only third party that we currently re, uh, use is around critical The only third party that we currently use is around critical area reports because we don't have in-house expertise. So if we're not able to quickly determine that all the criteria are met just by a quick visual review through, we send it to third party. We're currently using the state as third party, the Department of Ecology, which is what's allowed under state law. You can just go ahead and use Department of Ecology for that. But next year, we're going to actually hire a consultant for that because we have a lot of substandard critical areas reports coming into us and we're overwhelming the state. And so the state has asked us to stop sending them so much work. So we're actually going to do an on-call. We'll go out for RFP probably in the next month or so, so we can start it in January. So we'll hire an on-call consultant for for critical areas reports to keep those moving. It's not a bottleneck in terms of not having enough staff, it's not having staff with expertise.
Uh huh. So are you guys open to that for land use permits or?
We, at this point, at this point, we don't need it. We, like I said, we're processing permits just fine from a timeline standpoint. We really don't have that problem. So we don't need to do that in community development. I think everyone is aware that right now the bottleneck is at Public Works. They are also aware that they are the bottleneck right now because they are three engineers down for staffing. And so they're getting as creative as they can to try and get shored up. Because they actually don't have a development review engineer right now. So the county engineer is doing that on top of all of his county engineering work. So they are the, they are the backup right now and why we're missing deadlines, current deadlines on subdivisions is from them and they're fully aware of that.
Okay.
I have a question.
Oh, and Frank's hands back up too.
Oh, well, let Frank go first.
Thank you, Jason. So Mindy, I have a question regarding probably more on the budgetary side of things. So now that the potential is going to be there for issuing refunds, is there going to have to be some money set aside for a certain percentage of your revenue intake to as a contingency to to have on hand in case of a need for refunds? Or you guys get to spend everything that comes in? And then, you know, if if you have to issue a refund, then you have to quit buying paper clips or something. I mean, what's, you know, what are the, what are the ramifications, you know, of of this? From a budget perspective?
So again, we, based on how quickly we're processing permits right now, we have no concerns about meeting deadlines on the vast majority of our permits. So this is not an issue that we actually think is a big deal from that standpoint. We have what's called a fund balance, it's a reserve, and that is what we currently use to issue fee refunds. Our fee refunds right now have nothing to do with that. It has to do with getting into a permitting process and then people realizing that they can't proceed or other things. And so we we use our fund balance as needed to do fee refunds. So if over a course of years, it turns out, oh, shoot, we're actually issuing a ton of these and there is a budget impact to it, then we would have to reconsider that. But because we don't want to deplete our fund balance, we want to keep that. We sweep the the interest on that into the general fund, so we don't want to deplete that at all. But I think we'll monitor. And if what we expect to be true is true, that we just will continue to process permits under the timelines and not issue very many fee refunds, then it will be no big deal.
Yeah, it, you know, it, you know, when I hear something like this, though, I always think in terms of potential liability. So, you know, having that set aside or a percentage, you know, whether it's small, medium or large, you know, whatever is anticipated that could be set aside so that you guys aren't caught unawares due to unforeseen circumstances, but.
Right now, right now, our fund balance is 2.5 million. We use it to do fee refund and we also do, we use it for the long permits. So there are permits that can take multiple years to get through. And so we use the fee, the fund balance for that. The fund balance can also be used when the amount of permits slough. And so there are those circumstances where we predict how many permits we're going to get for the next year. So we predict our revenue and all that and everything seems hunky-dory. And then permits drop by 25%. And rather than ask the general fund to make up that gap, we can use the fund balance to make up the gap on that too. The fund balance gets replenished by really big projects and we haven't had one in a long time. Right? So the wind farm was a huge project, put a ton of money in there. The Lowe's distribution center put a ton of money into the reserve. If we get some more big projects, we get more money back into that reserve. So we try to leave it alone, but it exists for those reasons. So I think Frank, the answer is yes, we have a plan. At least initially to, unless if it turns out we're going to have to issue a lot of refunds and then we'll have to think of something else.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And my question was more along the lines of if if a situation arises that we're having to hire a lot more consultants to process work in time. I, I mean, I obviously maintain we'll, we will never see a refund, the, just too many other ways to get around it, it seems like, based on what's there. But this would be one, I think, makes sense, but does that impact the cost of fees?
Absolutely. It's either, it's either general, yeah, it's either general fund or fee-based.
Yeah.
One way or the other, if you're going to hire staff or a consultant, the taxpayers are going to pay for it.
Yeah, so that that would be my other concern in the I mean, I was afraid I knew the answer to that. Yeah, my concern would be that in having to hire a bunch of outside consultants that cost a lot more than than probably staff does per.
We're not intending, we're not intending to do that. The reason why we need to hire the third party for the wetland piece is because we can't hire a wetland specialist internally, like that's too specialized. It wouldn't make sense to hire somebody with that expertise. We wouldn't use them enough. It makes a lot more sense to have somebody on retainer and then just pay them, so.
And I don't know that we'll run into this stuff, but I'm trying to think of, you know, we've been caught off guard by growth before.
Yeah.
So I, I'm just throwing it out there so that it's out there. And I mean, part of this, that just helps me as I think about this later on
Yeah.
tonight or whatever, just to to voice this stuff or talk it through. But that would be the other concern is that fees start going up exponentially based on the need for extra staff during a time of extreme growth. And and then that obviously would negatively impact the population.
So it's no surprise that the government is only paid for by taxes. We don't have another revenue source. So either
Oh, I know.
Right, so either fees pay for staff or the general fund pays for staff, there isn't another option. So you're right, if there's a whole, if we go through a really big growth period and we don't have enough staff to process permits, we have to staff up. And in order to staff up, then you have to balance out, well, do we have enough permits coming in that it already makes up for that with current permit fees? Or do we need to increase permit fees? So it's a conversation, we have that conversation, the budget conversation every year, where we're trying to figure out, crystal balling the situation and trying to figure out what to do. So if you want to get deep in that, that's a whole nother committee you can be on.
Yeah, we can talk about that some other time. You know, when either of us has a minute, no, it's probably never happened. My other question was, and this is probably a little bit more of more personal interest, but you'd mentioned that we have not nearly enough engineers at the, at the county level. What do we do to remedy that? I know I've talked with Jeff several times and I know he's, you know, he's got a lot on his plate. So how how do we alleviate that? If if it is a known bottleneck, like what can we do to help with that?
Sure, so Josh, the director, Josh Metcalf, just completed a salary survey and they're reclassing a number of things to increase the salary to more of an industry standard. That should help because those positions are open and they've been open. We're just not getting anybody in them.
Yeah, you know, I've been pounding the table for that for a while, you just can't.
Yeah, you just can't. But again, if you increase the salary, that is taxes, like how do you pay for it, right? So anyway, so I, Josh just completed the salary survey. I don't know if the postings have been updated yet. I know last week he was presenting the salary survey and I'm not sure if it's been updated yet. So that's one way that's going to help.
And that sounds like that's something that's going to move forward and
It's already moving forward, yeah.
Okay.
We have hired on-call services of a recruiting company to help us with the open difficult. And it's not just engineering, but we have a lot of difficult positions to fill because they're highly specialized. So we now have on-call recruiting services to help with that. So Josh will be able to utilize that option as well. So we hope that those two things will help.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if he has other ideas going on about how he wants to to run that.
Yeah, no, just more, like I said, I heard you mention it and I'm more curious because I'm aware of how it's been over there and the challenges it's under. So and it obviously impacts everybody. So
Yeah.
Yeah, I just was curious how that's shaping up, so thank you.
Yeah.
All right, does anybody have anything?
The point is, if if they don't get, get it done, we get the 20% back. Woo-hoo.
We're not getting 20%.
Well, the point is 20% of not, I mean, it's, it's expensive, but Yeah, yeah.
They're not paying 20% of years away as projects.
No, no, and the 20% on a lot of, so for instance, far and away, we process MSRs most than anything, right? And like 700 last year, right? There's nothing compared to how many subdivisions. I mean, there's very few subdivisions we process and those are quite a higher fee for those subdivisions. But we have so, I mean, MSRs is what we bring in the most money on and the fees are considerably lower. And refunding a 20% on an MSR is no big deal. It becomes a big problem when you're dealing with complicated cases, which is why we're allowed to throw those other ones out to like 210 days or more. Because when you're looking at a master plan stuff, you're looking at probably 10,000 to 14,000 in fee. So then issuing a 20% becomes real money instead of, you know, a $400 fee. And 20% of that is like, well, great, I can go get a coffee, thanks, you know? It's not really, which is also back to Frank's point. Because we we do hit our timelines, I mean, MSRs, we're, we're at two weeks, we're not at 65 days, right? And they're actually at 120 days right now. We're more, we're orders of magnitude below what we need to be. So we actually don't think we're going to hit that just because we don't hit those timelines. We're fine on the, on most of them. It, but it is worth having the conversation about those weird ones that we will run into problems on. And it's worth having the code in there to help us with that. Because I don't want us to be stuck just having to issue a denial because we don't have any other remedy to move it forward. Because that is, again, to no one's best interest.
Well, and right, if you're talking about those, the ones that are most likely to enter into that stage, those are the very high-dollar ones.
They are the higher dollar ones.
They will absolutely not be into, I mean, and to be fair, I totally get it. They, I, I am aware that they cannot afford to do that. Like, that's not something we want either necessarily. I mean, I am all for accountability and the timelines and all that stuff, that would be great. But at the same time, we don't want underfunded building departments. We don't, I mean, we're, we're always already seeing some of the negative impacts of that. I mean, you know, there's I mean, one of my favorite quotes is there are no perfect solutions, there's only trade-offs. And and we don't, you know, we don't want to shorthand that end of it either. And so I'm trying not to be overly cynical, but I I know that those, that small percentage that's most likely to come into denial is also the small percentage that pays a majority of the fees for the year. And that that becomes a huge problem on both ends.
Yeah, which is, yeah, which is why we should.
Building department and for the developer. And then potentially creates an environment where less people want to develop, where they move to other jurisdictions if there are problems because they don't want to flush that money down the toilet either. And then it creates all these mushrooming issues that you can't always quantify, but it would have a terrible impact on the average person who their cost of living won't go down until there's enough inventory to necessitate.
No, absolutely. So this is why I said before, if you guys want to war room some examples with me, if we want to sit down and pull some, particularly the weird ones, and run them out and see if we can, where we can break the system. It's really helpful. We've been doing that internally to try and see where we break the system. Because it's no one's interest to get to that, to get to that. Everybody wants, everybody wants to move through to approvals. So if you, if you want to run things like that, I would, I'm happy to sit down. I also want to, I do want to hear if there are particular sticking points you guys have identified other than the fact that Public Works is short-staffed right now, that we can work on remedying internally without this code stuff at all. Like just how do we remedy that stuff internally? We are always looking for process improvement. So that's always our intention.
Yeah, I would just like to encourage, you know, do the opposite of King County. You know, make things easier, make it more.
We're not doing anything like King County. That's not a concern, yeah, we don't do anything like King County.
Make it more attractive to developers.
No, we're, we're, we are already more attractive than everyone around us.
Good, good, good.
So we'll stay that way.
We're trying, we're trying to get housing for people, right? We're thinking about those that can't afford housing. So every single thing we do that makes it more complicated, more convoluted, just adds to that. And that, that's where King County failed, trust me.
Oh, yeah. The other frustrating thing that we can't do anything about is the continuing of making the state laws more frustrating and creating these circumstances for us. And it's very frustrating, right? It's like, we are actually doing fine here, they could have left us alone and we wouldn't be having this conversation. But they didn't. They decided to lump us in with the counties that are having problems and now here we are. Great. I would prefer that we get left out of a lot of these staff, these big state-level changes because we actually don't have the issues that the other counties have. But here we are.
Absolutely, and that's kind of why I'm interested to see what we can come up with and how much we can tailor this to our advantage.
Try and.
So I'm interested, and I mean, I, I know, I know lots of people over there and I know everybody's working on this kind of stuff. So we, we do appreciate it. So any more questions from anyone on the commission side? See no hands, I see no lights. Any items from staff for good of the order?
No.
All right.
Calm down. I'm okay, you're okay.
Everybody go buy your Lotto tickets, finally happens. It's the end of the world.
Did we have a new date on the new conference room?
No. I'm trying so hard to get a date. As soon as I know, I'll let you guys know.
I know you are, I know you are.
Yeah, that's frustrating.
And my script says that Mindy will respond yes.
That's just, that's just can't because I always.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's just normal.
So we have one good of the order from Mr. Scootley.
Well, this, this is just a, a note to Frank. I did put up your sign for 911.
Oh, nice.
Any other?
Yeah, I'll just throw this out there. So I'm working with Lewis County Emergency Management and Washington DNR. And starting next week, I'll be spending a lot of time out in Packwood.
Thank you.
Doing structural assessments and other things to help further the Firewise program in the Packwood area. So initially, I'm going to focus on the, I think, the Timberline neighborhood, which is about 300-ish homes. And so that'll be an undertaking on my end. As well as DNR would like me to to try out some of their paperwork processes as well on top of that. So we'll see how that goes. But yeah, that'll be pretty much the rest of the month of October, I'll be out there doing that. And then I believe all of November, they're going to try to coordinate a cleanup type event. So Emergency Management will put out a bunch of information on that, but that's what I got.
On behalf of Packwood, thank you.
All right, any other items for good of the order? See no.
Move, we adjourn.
I see no hands, I see no lights. The next planning commission meeting will be on October 22nd. And the agenda items will be an update on the comprehensive plan periodic update. Steph, are there any other items for that meeting?
No, but a reminder that Thursday, Friday, Saturday, we have our open houses for the periodic update. We sent you guys the dates and times, would love it if you guys could pop. We sent you guys the dates and times. Would love it if you guys could pop into one of those if it's possible for you. We will uh, at the October 22nd, we will summarize and give you the results of those open houses. But it'd be awesome if you guys could stop in and talk with the public at those.
All right. Are there uh, any commissioners that will not be present at the next meeting? All right, I see no hands, I see no lights. Do I have a motion to get out of here?
Yes.
Yes.
Hit me.
Yeah.
I move, we adjourn.
Thank you.